The ordinance to the town council Chesapeake Beach for permitting full casino licenses or sports betting licenses. Is there anybody in the public who would wish to make a comment at this time? Hearing none.
I'm sorry, we do have one hand up. I'm trying to see.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
We have a Wesley.
Hi Wesley, please state your name and your and your home address. Can't hear, I can't hear you.
Sorry about that. You would think I'd know how to work this thing by now.
I hear you.
Well, Wes Donovan, 2335 Golf Club Drive in Dunkirk. I I'm lucky enough to work at the Rodden Hill Resort right there at 4165 Mears Avenue, Chesapeake Beach. I I would like to read a brief statement about the passing of House Bill 940 allowing legalized sports wagering to the state of Maryland. As being a named location in House Bill 940, our family couldn't be more excited to offer sports wagering as another form of entertainment for our guests to enjoy. The Rodden Hill is celebrating its 75th year of being in business and for the last 42 years, we've been playing bingo. We currently have governmental oversight by the Maryland State Lottery Commission with the electronic video pull tab machines and we would and we will continue to work with them with our new sports wagering B1 and online license. One of our core values is accountability and with the oversight by the Maryland Lottery Commission, we are held to a higher standard, which of course we welcome. Along those same lines, another core value of ours is integrity. We have a lot of respect for the Luckett family and for the Abner family and the importance that they play in our local community. We did not advocate for any radius limits to be put into the bill. We firmly believe that competition is good for everyone and it makes us all do better. Maryland Legislature set a goal for sports betting to be live by the start of the NFL season. So this fall, we will be looking to creating many new jobs with the sports betting. And by creating these jobs, it will help out our local economy. After all, we are all in this together. Being able to add sports wagering as an amenity for our guests to enjoy will help make the Rodden Hill Resort one of Southern Maryland's premier entertainment destinations. And on that, I'd like to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is and good luck to you. Is there any any other public comment on this particular ordinance? Hearing none, I'll move on to the next ordinance. Ordinance O dash 21 dash two in ordinance to town council Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, adopting the annual budget for the general fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 2021 to June 30 of 2022 and setting municipal tax rates. Is there anybody in the public have any comment on this? Ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions regarding the general fund budget, if I may.
This is this is a comment period. If you have a comment, I'll be glad to hear them.
How much has been spent to date on developing the concept of the town center? And does this budget include additional funds that would be spent to further develop that concept?
If that's your comment, I appreciate it, sir. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that has any comment? Hearing none. Sharon for O down one dash three. Didn't hear from Sharon.
Yeah.
You got six.
Yeah.
I I asked if you have the time that we set for the public hearing of ordinance O dash 21 dash three.
That was 654.
Okay, and 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 the final one?
656.
Okay, we're good then. Thank you. Order O dash 21 dash three in ordinance to the town council Chesapeake Beach, adopting the annual budget for the mitigation fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 21 to June 30 of 22. Is there anybody in the public that has any any comment on this ordinance? Hearing none. I'll move on to the the final ordinance O dash 21 dash four in ordinance to the town council Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, adopting the annual budget for the water reclamation treatment plan fund for the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 21 to June 30 of 22. Does anybody in the in the public have a a comment on this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll close the the public hearing portion of this meeting and resume the town council meeting at seven o'clock sharp. So thank you. We can take a break. 2021 town council meeting. I'll call to order, let the let the record read that the entire council to include the the mayor are present. At this time, we'll have a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
States of America.
United Republic.
For what it stands.
My nation.
My nation.
I'm glad. Unites of all. With liberty.
Justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have it. At this time, I'll ask, is there any public comment on any item on the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the April 18 town council meeting?
So moved.
Correction. Is is there a second? Okay, there's a somebody has a correction. Is that what I heard?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it's Larry Jaworski, just a very minor correction on the minutes of the March 18th town council meeting. On the fourth page, item eight E. It on economic committee, the last sentence talks about Councilman Morris invited the new Chesapeake Beach Building Alliance to attend. That should be corrected to Chesapeake Beach Business Alliance. Thank you.
We'll do that. Thank you. We have a we have a a motion to approve it and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I have it. Prove all the minutes of the April 5th work session.
Move to approve.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the eyes have it. Next, before we move to the to to section six of the the meeting, I just want to announce that, you know, while the while the federal government did change April 15th tax day to, I believe, you know, they extended it out for for two months. One thing didn't change. April 15th is Larry's birthday. So so happy birthday, Larry.
And and just for the record, just for the record, I've decided to celebrate the reverse birthday, so I'm celebrating 17 this year.
Very good.
Yeah, I was gonna offer you a beer, Larry, but I can't now.
Quite frankly, Larry, I don't think you're old enough to be on the town council now.
Okay, good night.
Very good. Happy birthday, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Town administrators report Holly's or anything that you want to highlight before I ask the council, do they have any comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, beginning with Derek, did you have any any comments or anything on Holly's? Report?
No, nothing on this report. Thank you.
Keith?
Yeah, just a quick comment. So it it looks like there'll be restrooms out there in early April, which I think is great. And then it also, it looks like you're expanding the trash pickup. Is that correct? To to more days during the week?
Were you referring to Bayfront Park?
Yeah, thank you. Bayfront Park.
Sure. Yes. So with staff, we are going to have that staffed early. So with staff on site, they would be collecting the trash on those days as well. So that would be in addition.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Greg?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Holly. I was wondering regarding the they were the pre bid meeting for the water tower painting at Richfield. How many bidders were in attendance?
I believe there is nine or 10. Jay could confirm that total. Jay, is that correct? Not seen. It was it was nine or 10, I recall.
Yeah, I think I think it was actually 11, Holly.
Okay, thanks. This is a little unorthodox. Holly, I wanted you to apologize for something from the last meeting. I watched the meeting tape during John Castro's segment. I was asking you some questions. And it was really something that should have been done maybe during Wayne's segment. And I and I laughed when I saw it and you must have been scratching your head thinking where I was coming from with that. But I wanted to ask again at at this segment. I had met with the town, some town officials a couple of months ago regarding some some actions that the HOA had requested of the town down there regarding the developer Richfield Station. And the town had explained its position, how it couldn't get involved for certain reasons with property. It was going to turn over to Richfield Station HOA and that the town was going to issue them a letter. Have you looked into that at all? Has that happened or in progress?
I have looked into that and that's something I will be following up with the HOA on. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. No, no other questions. Thank you.
You, Larry?
A question and a clarification. Under the WRTP filter covers, apologized, I didn't go actually look at the documents. Did did we include the solar panels that we had discussed in the past?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. And then just under the Bayfront Park, a clarification that we discussed a couple of months ago. The first sentence says Bayfront Park remains closed to the general public. What I thought we had discussed a while back was while it's closed to the general public, it is open to town residents and first responders. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're we're we actually haven't drafted any new resolution to include that, but that is going to be our policy moving forward. Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. That's all.
Charlie?
I no questions, but one quick comment. I know it was me and I I know sometimes I probably sound nitpicky on these things about taking the signs down at the interest Bayfront Park. I noticed they have been taken down and that's awesome. More more welcoming. So thank you, Jay and your crew for for doing that.
Thank you, Charlie. Dr. Bodine?
Oh, yes, just two things. One is on the water tower painting. I still think it's something we ought to consider if we're going to brand it in some way, paint something special on it. Still think it'd be a great idea if we could have a competition for students, very similar to what happened with Veterans Park. This could be for elementary, middle school, high school, but some sort of competition for the branding, I think, would be would be fun. Way to get our our kids involved. That's the first comment. I'm not sure how to make that happen. The second co- the second idea, our second comment is on Bayfront Park. It says that when are the when is staff going to start working? Is it going to be soon?
This weekend.
Okay, and they'll be there like normal hours like they are in the summertime?
Yes.
Because I got residential complaints about parking there this past weekend, so I'm really glad to hear that. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Administrator's report, we've Jay's report. If the council has any any questions of Jay, I'll begin with with Valerie.
Hi, Jay.
Aye.
All right. First of all, let's just skip down to the heritage. I'm I'm absolutely thrilled with something that's happening here. And I'm happy to hear that we're closing the loop that when we actually approve something through either planning and zoning or through the planning and zoning administrator that we're actually looking to confirm that what we approved is what is actually being built. And I'm really thrilled that we're starting to close that loop. I'm not sure if we do that with everything. It'd be great if we did, whether it be fences, decks or whatever, what is approved is what's actually built in and we know it. But I think that's a wonderful thing that we're starting to really do. And so I'd like to commend you on that. The second point is we could be soon, hopefully, passing a general fund budget maybe. And if we do, it has a line item in there for storm drain inspection and maintenance. I remember you provided a list when we did the highway user funds in paving and it was a prioritized list of the areas that were going to be done first until the running man money ran out. And my request is in due time with no rush because I know how busy you are. It would be great if we could get a prioritized list of what storm drain areas are being inspected and maintained in what order? Because as you know, you've been down at 27th Street where there's problems. I'd like to be able to report back to the residents in this area, this neighborhood, as to when that would be addressed. And so if I had like a prioritized list, I can say this might be when it's going to be looked at. So just if it, you know, the same idea of a prioritize list like you do for paving would be awesome. And those are my comments.
Gotcha. Thank you. Charlie?
I have no questions.
Larry?
Not a question, but a comment. I just wanted to say that I'm very pleased and somewhat relieved to report that state highway has finally repaired the safety fencing along 261 just to the north of the firehouse. So thank you.
Greg?
Sure. Good evening, Jay.
Good evening, Greg.
I was wondering how we were set for the the fields at Callum's for for any potential spring sports, spring, summer coming up?
I I think that might actually be more of a question for Holly than myself as far as scheduling groups and plans, but the actual fields are going along and schedule all the physical aspects out there, but scheduling, I would refer to Holly, Greg.
Yeah, I'm I'm merely inquiring about the condition of the fields. That's all.
Yeah, everything's on schedule. Irrigation's coming back online. They just blew it out. You know, it's Bermuda grass, so there's not a whole lot going on there yet, but everything else out there is on schedule.
Awesome. And I wanted to follow along behind Councilwoman Bodine's comments about the heritage. I see your comment with Wayne and and some town hall staff are setting procedures in place to ensure some things happen. Does the town have written codified standards for any construction matters?
And I remember you asked that last council meeting, Greg, and this was a when they came to the town of development, we set out specifically for this development being one of the last ones that's going on. So it was written for this project. Is it written in our code specifically everything we're doing? I'm not 100% sure, but I'm looking into that.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Jay. A quick question about Callum's field. The the restrooms over there, will they, when will they be functioning? Or have they been set up for the summer, spring, summer, be winterized, whatever the appropriate term is?
We can make that happen when we can, but according to the CDC and different things at this time, it's not something that we're going to do right now. That's the way I understand it.
Okay, well, I mean, if there are guidelines that state otherwise, I just know there's activities happening there at this point. So I was just curious, you know, I've had people asking me when I've been over that way, whether there was were open yet, and I've been directing them to the Northeast Community Center. But anyway, just was wanting to follow up on that. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Keith. Derek?
Yeah, just one quick question for you, Jay. In the water park information, you you make a note that the dry state inspection will have passed by the council meetings. So did that happen? I assume it did, but.
It did, and we passed, yes.
Excellent. All right. Thank you. That's it.
Sure.
Good job. Okay, water reclamation treatment plant. We read John's report. Do you have any questions? I'll begin with Derek.
I have nothing for John. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. Keith?
No questions. Thank you.
And Greg?
Yeah, um, just something I wanted to mention to John for a while now. You know, we've all got a lot on our plates. Among the numerous things I'd like to to do, one of which is to come by the the treatment plan at some opportune time and have someone, you know, maybe talk to John about the operation. So you get a better idea of what you all go through on a daily basis up there. That's all. Thanks.
You're welcome. Yeah, I think that that I think John can make that happen. Okay, Larry?
I'll join in on that tour when you get it set up, John. Question and a comment. Under the item on the influence flow testing for the coronavirus, I just wanted to make sure the record's clear that that testing, which was positive, was on the influent, which is the flow into the plant. Have we done any testing on the effluent or the discharge from the plant?
Yes, we have, and there is some good news. I performed a a test on the influent and the effluent on the same 24 hour period. And we had a positive, again, test on the influent, but the effluent was a negative. So the UV lights seem to be working.
Thank you. And that's pretty much what I imagined was going to be the answer, but I just wanted to be on the record when people read this that they don't get alarmed by seeing a positive test because that's the flow going into the plant. And then the discharge that's going into the bay is negative, which is a good thing. Then just the other comment on the MDE inspection. Again, this is a regular kind of thing when these people show up. And I just noticed that he reviewed the filter operation and questioned update on the progress of determining the problems. Have we gotten any further along on resolving those issues?
A lot of the stuff we're working on right now is just mechanical. And then we'll, we are in the RFP for taking care of the operations on the algae control. And hopefully we'll get that part taken care of. And right now, we are trying to put another filter we had off online. And once we get that, we're going to take it through another test to see what the filters will actually do in this warmer weather and put a lot more flow to it and actually test it and see what we can get out of them.
Okay, good. And then finally, again, just for the record, no partial or full bypasses and no spills to report. Another good month, John, and your folks at the plant. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. Charlie?
Yeah, hats off to you guys. That we had talked a while ago about possibly setting up a tour and I know some of the some of the my fellow council folks have been on that or had a chance to go see the facility. I would absolutely love that as well. Certainly understand, you know, we're not going to do it until it's feasible and you guys have time to accommodate it, but I definitely would like to walk along. I'll walk behind Larry with my hands behind my back and he'll just tell me not to touch any finger. Should be fine.
We'll set this up pretty soon because we're always open for tours.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Charlie. And lastly, Valerie?
I have no questions, but I'm I'll join that tour. Sounds just fine.
Thank you. Code enforcement report, we've read Connie's report. If we have any questions, I'll begin with Valerie, work my way around.
Yeah, hi, Connie. Um, as usual, you know, nice comprehensive report. I was wondering, how many legal BMBs are there currently in town?
Right now, there's only one, but we do have one that should soon be coming online. The one that has been listed on my report for several months now in 28th Street is currently working with the county and I got a report today from them that they have to install one grab bar going up a set of stair rails and they will be able to get their license.
Okay, that's all I had. And thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Valerie, and thank you, Connie. Charlie?
Sorry, I was on mute. Um, yeah, I'm wondering if you've had an influx or you're expecting an influx. You you have applications received here as as two. And I'm just a little puzzled by that. I would have expected that to be hired. Do we have any sense that we're going to see an influx based on the on the discussions we've been having and that this is really the core way for some folks who are very interested in using their homes this way and in in being able to do that? Do you have any any sense of that, Connie?
I think you're a little bit confused. The applications that you see are for the regular rental program, the rental licensing for regular rentals has nothing to do with BMBs or anything like that. And the numbers, some months are kind of skewed because when I get information in, I input it and sometimes that's before or after a report is due. So some months, you're going to see more applications come across than you are other months. But those applications, every one of those numbers are based on full-time rental properties.
You're right. I was confused because I thought these were for creating a legal BNB as defined by Maryland. So you're right, I did misunderstand, so I apologize. Thanks for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry?
Hi, Connie. Just again, as usual, when I'm looking at the open code enforcement case detail reports, when I get towards the end of it, we have six cases listed there that have been open now for a couple of years, I'll say. And we're just wondering if there's anything, any support that the town can provide to help close these up?
There's there's one on there, Larry, that I'm going to soon have to file some citations about several pieces of property. One of one, one of the lengthy ones on there, the owner of the properties in town has passed away. And I think they're all still in estate litigation. So I'm kind of holding off on them. One of them, again, as I have told you before, is a foreclosure. And I speak with the HOA representative from that community quite often. She has no more information about it than I do. It's a shame because it's a beautiful home sitting in the middle of a nice development. And it's been in foreclosure for over two years now. Couple of the others are just me nitpicking somebody to get something completed. And one of them is a lady whose husband is very ill and I've been trying to be as diligent as I can and and she keeps doing a little bit, so I'm trying to let it be a kind of a small town effort. And you know what? Maybe we could all get over there and help her finish it. That's something we could think about.
If there's any more we as the council can do, let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
All right. Thanks, sir. And Greg?
Yeah, no questions for Mrs. Adele. Thank you.
Okay, Keith?
No questions. Thanks.
And lastly, Derek?
Yes, I have one. It's it's actually, I believe it's in the report that's up on the screen. There's one violation that's remains open for operating a short-term rental, and I thought you were going to refer to it before, but I I think this is actually different. So my my question is not who it is or the circumstances behind it, although but what I I would like to know if possible.
It's actually, if I could just interrupt, I could you just, will you please say the address since it's on the screen?
It's on 28th Street.
That's the one that I was discussing about they're getting, they're getting their license to become a BNB.
Okay, so it's actually not technically a short-term rental, then?
No, it 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 came online as a short-term rental and until they did, until they get all of their licensing, I'm I'm not going to take it off of there.
Okay, well, that negates my question then. Thank you, Connie.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Derek. Thank you, Connie. There is no treasurers reporters. We're in in budget season. Town engineers report, I don't know if Wayne's on the call. I know there's there's, is Wayne on the call, Holly?
Yes.
Oh, very good. Okay. Okay, we've read Wayne's report. If we have any questions of of Wayne, I'll 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 begin with Derek.
Yeah, Wayne, I just want to ask for an update on the 261 sidewalk. Notice the verbiage in the report hasn't changed, but has there been any activity on that in the last month?
Yes, we received a change proposal from BAI yesterday, actually. I'm reviewing that and I'll get that over to Holly to be processed.
And the change proposal is for?
When we met with the state highway administration a month or so ago, they gave us some different criteria than BAI had previously anticipated. So I had them revise their proposal to match what SHA needs at this time. If you recall, my If you recall my discussion, SHA previously had directed them to do a bunch of retaining wall design work. We've now pushed that off to the next phase according to what SHA has agreed to. But they asked for some cross-sections of the entire alignment, which BAI did not have in their proposals last and then until we can retain them all.
Okay, and then just one follow-up. So I know right now is the time that the application for the phase two of the Safe Cross to School Grant is, is open. The work that's being done right now with BAI, that's not going to affect that application. Is that correct? And I think that's probably more for Holly.
That's correct.
Good, very good. All right. Thank you. Thank you both.
Okay, Keith?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Greg?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Wayne. I just, I had a question. I saw where it looked like we were making some progress with permitting and release for construction up there in Richfield Station. Near the trailhead, those new townhomes that I presume Ryan is, homes are going to build. Do we have the timeframe yet when that construction is about going to start? Do we, do we know anything?
I do not. I've been working with the developer and his attorney to get the public works agreements completed and get the estimates where we need them to be. They're anxious to get moving, but they need to get the information back to us before we can, we can move forward.
Just understood. Thank you, Wayne.
All righty, Larry?
Hey Wayne, a question for you on the Highland sewer study. It says you submitted the state grant loan application in the January, responded to state questions near the end of February. What, what is the subject of the grant and the loan app? What, what would we be looking at it when we get the loan or the grant?
If we get the loan or the grant, they'd be giving us some type of funding to allow us to move forward with design and think construction. I don't think we hear back from them until May or June is when they make their decision.
And has there been any further discussion on the extent of that sewer? There was some question about the areas that reside or that lie out in, outside the bounds of the town versus those units that are inside the town limits?
Not that I'm aware of. The request we put in was for the entire system.
Thank you. That's all.
Sure.
Thank you, Larry. Charlie?
My only question echoed Derek's and it's already been answered.
Okay, Valerie?
Hi there. How you doing?
Good.
I just have two topics or questions. One is, in looking at the fishing creek dredging, the second paragraph drawings for you to review MGI. Are those drawings of you just increasing the height of the current jetties or is it something different?
They are for reworking the current jetties and also some preliminary drawings for dredging the channel.
Okay, I've, I've been interested to see if there was some sort of study. I think just increasing the height is a temporary solution for the amount of sediment flow that comes in and out of the fishing creek channel. And I've been interested to see in the long term, we could re-engineer those, probably make them a bit more parallel. Still allowing, you know, the charter boats come in and out and everything like that. But something that wouldn't mean that we would not have to dredge quite as frequently. So although, you know, if we get a grant to raise it, that's nice for the near term. But in the long term, I still think we have we, we could be a, we could come up with a maybe a more innovative solution in looking at the actual design of those jetties instead of just increasing the heights. That's my comment there. How we can move that along, you know?
Well, unfortunately, that's an Army Corps of Engineers project that we're just kind of on the periphery of and why, and reviewing as it may affect the town. So those decisions will be made by Army Corps of Engineers.
Yeah, and I understand that. It's just, you know, the amount that we have to dredge, the, the frequency there are the, there's some of those solutions that we could come up with that would make that time spend longer. It would be, you know, well worth, I think, our time and effort to look into that. I, I just, real quickly, I just remember going out to drop off the oysters with Jay. And you can see the depth change from underneath the bridge with this fish finder. And you could see that because it was more narrow, the flow was different. And so of course it was deeper. And I'm just wondering, the way those are currently engineered, if, you know, it's not, if we couldn't do a bit of a better job. The second question I had was on that maintenance agreement on the second page with Ron Reel. And I was wondering, it does include stormwater runoff, right?
It does.
It does. Great. So I know that that was one of the questions. So that's fantastic. All right, those are all my questions. Thanks, Wayne.
Sure. Okay, thank you. And, and thank you, Wayne. Deputies report, I, we've read the deputies' report. If you have any questions, I'll, I'll begin with Valerie. Is there somebody from the, the sheriff's office on the call?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor, Lieutenant Holler.
So we, we've read your report. I'll see if the council has any, any questions. And I'll begin with Valerie, if you do have any, ma'am.
Deputy, I think the, the biggest issue that we've had this month was the Chesapeake Beach Railway Trail. And an unfortunate incident with someone being mugged or having her personal possessions taken. Can you provide any update with that? Because it's been most concerning.
Yes. The, the sheriff's office has three detectives working on the case and I speak with them almost daily. They tell me they get a lot of tips and they've even had a few persons of interest that they've done photo lineups to show to the victim, but nothing has panned out so far. I know they're working vigorously on it. But yeah, no luck at this point. So in the meantime, we are basically just increasing our patrol checks out there. We also have not just uniform patrol checks, we have undercover detectives out there patrolling the trails. So you might see someone sitting on a park bench and it might be one of ours. So, so we are patrolling it and I'm just hoping for the best. But I touch base with them almost daily. And I know that if they develop something, they'll, they'll contact me immediately. But so far, no luck on it. So.
Thank you very much for all your efforts. That sounds like really some proactive stuff that you're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
That happened midday. I mean, it's one thing if it happens at 12 o'clock midnight. It's another thing if it happens midday. That was the most concerning part about it, I think, for people.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely a very unusual and odd circumstance. But I can also tell you that every deputy on the beach patrol now has a key to the golf carts at the water park. So you should see us out there on those moving around and you know, a lot more police presence out there is the main thing. So.
It's interesting you said that. May I suggest that in your next budget cycle request for the town? If you need something like your own golf cart or something to patrol the two boardwalks that we have or something like that, you need to let us know. We can discuss it, put it in as a capital request or, you know, a capital purchase. And that's something that would be a very reasonable request to have. If you want to do it during with the water park, that's fine. If it meets your needs. But if it does not meet your needs, then you simply need to let us know through your budgetary process. And we can, you know, discuss it and make something potentially happen. Okay?
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, of course, you know, I'm, I'm sure everyone's got their own thoughts on this, so I, I don't need to belabor it. I appreciate all you guys are doing and you know, let's, let's hope that, yeah, I think you just made the comment that this is an unusual incident. Let's, let's hope it stays that way. But appreciate all you guys are doing. Stay on top of this.
Thank you, Councilman. We will.
Thank you, Charlie. And Larry?
No further questions or comments. Just thank you, Lieutenant Hollinger, for your continued service.
Thank you, sir.
You. And Greg?
Yeah, following along with the trend, the subject of the evening here. On the fishing creek trail, I know this seems after the fact or reflected, reflected. The cameras on the trail, I know we talk about it from time to time. Are we close to being able to have cameras on the trail that can successfully stay in operation?
Yes.
Awesome. And another, and this might be another question for Holly, but I, I too had been getting some comments from some residents regarding Brownies Beach and out-of-state tags being there in full parking lot. That's just a comment. I, I know that it's just an ongoing fluid from day to day situation. And that's it. Stay safe and thank you, Lieutenant.
All right. Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah. Thank you, Larry. I mean, thank you, Greg. I'm sorry. Keith?
Yeah, thank you. My questions have been asked and answered. Thank you.
All right. And Derek?
Yeah, likewise, just echo some of the things that have already been asked and answered already. And thank you again, Lieutenant and all your staff for, for what you do for our town.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department report, which we've read. If you have any questions, please, please funnel into Larry and he'll try to get you an answer. Next, we're at the Bears Report. I guess first thing I want to do is, is acknowledge, applaud and commend the town council who are about to about to pass an ordinance that will reflect the, the fifth straight year of a decrease in the property taxes. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's unprecedented and it, and it shows what happens when you work together as a team. So I commend you all. Just to tell you a real quick story, you know, when I go over to Beach Elementary, when they have, if I want, if, if I were mayor, I would, you know, blank, blank, blank and they, they.
Oops. Sorry, Mayor. You're, you're muted.
Okay, I don't know how that happened. I didn't do it. Okay, so when I go there, the, the, the common topic that, that the kids always ask me is, you know, what are taxes? Or what about taxes? And, and I ask them why and they go, well, that's what we hear our parents talk about. They want to know about taxes, 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 you know? And then I had to go through the whole spiel of explaining what a tax is and how it comes out of mommy and daddy's paycheck, that sort of thing. So having said that, if taxes are that important to our youth, you know, it's, it's going to always remain something important. And, and this council working together to achieve what's best for the town has resulted in five straight tax decreases. So I already said it, I'll say it again, and I'll say it to anybody who I talk to. I applaud you all. And I thank you all. So next, today's report from the Maryland Department of Health was that positive COVID cases in Maryland increased 1,444 from yesterday. So from yesterday to today, 1,444 folks tested positive for, for COVID. So, you know, it's not going anywhere, folks. So please be safe, mask up and get the vaccine. You know, we, we will survive this pandemic, but it'll mean our continued sacrifice, patience and vigilance. The citizens of this great town have, have been remarkable so far. And I'm confident that we'll, we'll remain, you know, vigilant moving forward. And I thank everybody in the town, in, in this wonderful town. So, so thank you. That's my report. Next, I'm going to we're going to vote on ordinance O dash 21 dash one and ordinance of the town council of Chesapeake Beach prohibiting full casino licenses or sports betting licenses. As you know, we, we held a referendum in November. We gave us overwhelming results on both issues. I think it was 79% 71%. Said no, said, you know, this ordinance reflects the results of that referendum. So having said that, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Second, I want to begin. Excuse me. I want to begin a discussion with, with Dr. Bodine and work my way around. If you have anything to.
Oh, sure. Obviously, this is what the public wanted in overwhelming numbers based on the referendum results. And I do have one request. And it's a request for planning and zoning to include this prohibition explicitly in the comprehensive plan, number one. And number two, add any appropriate language to section 290 in the zoning ordinance as a recommendation to town council. And I'll tell you why. What I want to do, from my rationale, is I want it as something that cannot be conducted in any land use within town. I think that places our local zoning, zoning authority very clear. It makes it very clear with our local zoning authority. So I think it, although this ordinance is wonderful, I think it's easily overturned in four years, depending on who's it's less likely to be overturned if it's part of our land use. And so that's why I'm requesting that planning and zoning, when they do the comprehensive plan eight, add it to the comprehensive plan explicitly. And to suggest the appropriate zoning ordinance changes to section 290. And that's my comment. I'll be voting heavily in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Charlie?
Yeah, I, I don't, you know, I, I think that it's hard to argue that, that the public spoke very clearly. And I don't think there's a lot of wiggle room for us as elected officials to ignore that. So I appreciate people making one easy for us.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry?
I'll just reinforce previous comments. We asked voters a question and they overwhelmingly voiced our objection. So I don't see how we as elected members of the town council can do anything but support those positions. Otherwise, if I was not a member of the council but a voter, I would say, then why did you ask me the question? If you're not going to listen to what I had to tell you. Now, on the other hand, though, as was pointed out earlier, this ordinance has no standing in terms of what happens. The state controls this. And indeed, what I learned yesterday at the last day of the session of legislation up in Annapolis, they did indeed pass legislation that's going to allow at least the sports betting part of it. So we're doing this really just, I guess, for the record, but it has really no legal standing. Thank you.
And before I go to Greg, I just want to add a little information to, to Larry's comment. I, I, I can tell you that, you know, this, this week I did speak to both of our representatives up in Annapolis, Senator Jackson and, and delegate Fisher. And they were both very appreciative of what we do down here in terms of this. Yes, you're right. The, the bill that just passed did have, have verbiage that gave them the ability to override, you know, local authorities, but not every bill will. And as I said, you know, so our, our representatives, you know, heard us and, you know, we were encouraged to, to move forward. So thank you, Larry. Mr. Morris?
Well, it's not a surprise to anybody that I'm opposed to approving this ordinance as written. I want to remind everybody and point out that this ordinance, the point of this ordinance originally was to say loud and clear that this town doesn't want expanded full casino licenses, period. I, I'm also opposed to full casino licenses. But I, I feel that adding the prohibition of the sports betting makes that signal less clear. It's less of what we wanted it to be. Applications may already be underway to bring sports betting to town. And it is the prerogative of the state to award these licenses. I'm not opposed to adding sports betting to town. It's good for town tax revenue. It's good for economic development. We've got several hot issues that it's hard for us to vote against, but they make good economic development sense. It's good for business relations. Making that change and it's a good balance for this town. And for those reasons, I'm not in support of this ordinance as written. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. I, well, I want to echo some of my earlier colleagues there. I think Valerie, I think that was a great idea with the planning and zoning. And, and, you know, in the same vein as what has already been said. I mean, we asked, the people told us. And I'm, I'm certainly in support of this ordinance. So thank you.
Thank you, Keith. And lastly, Derek?
Yeah, so I. Yeah, so I too want to echo the comments that we've heard already. And we've stated another way. I mean, we really serve as a conduit from our residents to our state officials in this matter. And this ordinance makes that connection. So I'll be in support of the ordinance.
Okay, very good. And before I call for a vote, I do want to add one more thing with my conversations with Senator Jackson and Delegate Fisher this weekend. It was basically that, you know, the sports gambling does not add tax revenue to the town like the electronic bingo does. There's no provision for a tax to the town on that. In fact, it's my belief, and I've said this before when we were discussing it, that sports gambling will make the electric bingo decrease because folks now have different options. So if you come to town 100 hours, you spend $100 on electronic bingo, the town gets a tax on that $100. Now you come to town with $100, you spend 50 on gambling, 50 on bingo. We only get the tax on bingo. So just, and they understood what I was saying. They heard me loud and clear. So anyhow, having said that, we motioned to approve. We have a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Final one, the ordinance passes. Thank you. I know that this has been, you know, difficult for everybody. Ordinance O-21-3, in order to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach adopting the annual budget for the mitigation fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 2021 to June 30, 2022.
Mayor, I think you skipped, Mayor, you skipped the general fund.
You're right.
You can do mitigation first.
We can still do this, though.
Yes.
Okay, this is O-21-3. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. All right.
And the ayes have it. Thank you, Larry. I'll go back to ordinance O-21-2. In order to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, adopting the annual budget for the general fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for fiscal year July 1 of 21 to June 30 of 22, and setting municipal tax rates. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Five years in a row, everybody. And thank you again. Vote on ordinance O-21-4, in order to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, adopting the annual budget for the water reclamation treatment plan fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 2021 to June 30 of 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Next, I'm going to introduce ordinance O-21-5. In ordinance of the beach for the fiscal year on 2030 source of the town. I'll sit here in six, seven, on May the next, there's ordinance 21 that the council page in the annual budget of fun. July 21, the G of 20, I will set the public here 57, May the 30. I'll introduce and vote on resolution R-21-4, the resolution of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach endorsing the flood and sea level rise action plan. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Very good. Okay, next, planning and zoning report. We've read Larry Brown's report. I don't know if Larry's on the call.
Oh, yes, I am.
Okay, does the, does the, I'll make a round and see if the council has any questions on Larry's report. I'll start with Derek.
I do, actually. Thanks, Larry, for being here tonight. So you're aware, you were in our meeting last month. We passed a resolution to adopt the walkability master plan. We passed that in that resolution last month. What, could you tell me, what is your plans on the commission to adopt that and integrate that into the comprehensive plan?
Well, in a couple of my reports, previous reports, I've said where the intent is to at least adopt it as an appendix to the comprehensive plan. I asked the commission to take a look at it and come back with their ideas at the last meeting. And I'll hear more from them this time. Depending on the time that we have to look at this and incorporate some of the recommendations, I've looked at it. And there are a lot, quite a few specific recommendations in there. And I'd like to, personally, I'd like to get those, at least the more significant ones included in the implementation part of the comprehensive plan. But that depends on how much time we have before we have to wrap this up.
Right. And while I asked the question, because that was kind of my understanding as well, but I noticed in your upcoming agenda for next week, it's not listed. So I was just wondering more on the timing of it. And I don't, I don't think it's necessarily a hurry, per se, that, you know, has to be done next week by any means. And you guys have a lot on your plate, but I was just curious what your plan of action was on that.
Well, that is a working meeting next week. The agenda has been cut back in its content. I honestly, I didn't get a cut on the agenda before it got published. So it will, there will be a lot more that we'll be looking at.
Okay, and I'm sure I speak for my colleague, Charlie, but if you need any assistance implementing some of those ideas or plans into the comprehensive plan broader than, you know, than just adopting the master plan, I'm sure he and I and others would be happy to assist with that.
Well, the, I know they're all significant, all the recommendations, but if you had any particular ones that you wanted highlighted or that you wanted us to focus on, if you could let me know, and I'll try and make sure the commission gets a look at it.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you. Thank you, Derek. Keith?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. No questions. I just wanted to thank the commission and Larry and the administration for adopting additional meetings to help try to make this comprehensive plan, you know, meet the deadline that we set for it. So I really appreciate the work you all are doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith. And Greg?
And no questions. It's us to comment. Larry, thanks for being here this evening. And I probably couldn't say enough about you and your group. I commend you for your leadership through these difficult times. You're doing a great job. I think their commitment, hard work, serving this town are not unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
Yeah, to my fellow Larry, hang in there. Good work. Please keep trying to push the ball forward. And I imagine you are aware of this. You and I had a sidebar discussion a while back about economic development and input into the comprehensive plan. We, economic development, actually held a meeting a couple of weeks ago. You're going to see the report coming up here in a couple of minutes. We will continue to push that forward and look to provide input into the comprehensive plan on appropriate economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Charlie?
Yeah, I don't want to turn this into a report on walkability meetings, and I'll have something to say about that in the lightning round. But I think, Larry, we're certainly willing to help or want to help and look for ways to insert, you know, some of the ideas or plans or planning for plans into the work that you guys are doing. Hoping to meet with Holly in the coming weeks to help us better understand, you know, there's priorities that we want to do. And then there's, you know, matching those with reality of what we can do and how we can figure out how to make some things really become tangible. And that's going to inform a little bit what we want to get into the plan. So we'll be talking about that quite a bit here in the coming weeks and months. And the only other thing I want to say is just echo what everyone else has said. I mean, you guys are really working hard, and the extra meetings are great. I'm sure you're not thrilled about them, but it's great that we're having them. And I appreciate the effort there, you and all the members.
Thank you, Charlie. And Valerie?
Oh, yes, I'll just echo what the other town councilman said. Thank you very much, and thank you to your committee. I am really happy to see that you added more meetings. I think that'll really help. Having listened to the planning and zoning meetings, I know how much you guys are working. And I look forward to the end product of your comprehensive plan.
Thank you. I wrote down your recommendations on the gambling ordinance. And we'll certainly be looking at that as potentially part of the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Larry. Do you have any questions on it? Or was I clear enough on what I was hoping we could see?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Board of Appeals, there was no meeting. Chesapeake Beach Oyster Culmination Society, we have read John's report. Climate Change Advisory Group, Larry?
Yeah, thank you. You have the report in front of you. I'll just highlight a couple of things. I'm very pleased that this council unanimously passed the flood and sea level rise action plan. Our colleagues to the north in the town of North Beach did the same action last week at their meeting. This is one of those things that it's critical that our two towns work together as the twin beaches to address this issue since flooding and sea level rise does not pay any attention to town boundaries. So it'll be good to push this forward. And this will have some direct impact and input into our comprehensive plan as well as we have already discussed some of those potential impacts. The Climate Change Advisory Group had a discussion a week or two ago. We talked about moving also forward with looking at conducting a carbon footprint or greenhouse gas emissions inventory of town facilities. Town Administrator Holly Wall pointed out that some of this work has already been done. And we will take a look at that and see what we can do as the advisory group to push that forward for a more comprehensive inventory across all town assets. Just an update on stuff up in Annapolis. There was a climate change bill that was moving through the state legislature. House had one version of the bill, H R 583, and the Senate had another one, which was S B 414. Unfortunately, the bill died yesterday in the last session before they adjourned for the year. So there will be no climate change bill coming forward out of Annapolis this year, which will make it a little bit more of a challenge for individual towns, counties, whatever municipalities to try to push forward an agenda on climate change without some overarching state guidance is truly unfortunate. And my understanding, looking into some of what happened there, is, as usual in these things, it ended up being a quibble over some particular numbers. In this case, it was a target that was set for reducing greenhouse gas emissions by 2030. Excuse me, in the House bill, they had set a limit of 60%. The Senate was looking for 50%. And they were unable to reach the agreement on that, which just makes me shake my head on that. So if you have any additional comments, please get in touch with us. And I'd like now to ask co-chair Keith Pardeck if he has any additional comments.
Thank you, Larry. I think you did a great job covering what we've been talking about recently. So no additional comments. Appreciate it.
Okay, well, don't go anywhere, Larry.
Economic Development, you also have that report. Touching on a couple of things, been participating in some meetings hosted by Calvert County, interesting one. They're trying to move forward with getting the Southern Maryland Heritage Area, a federal designation as a national heritage area. What does that mean? Not a whole lot. It just provides some, I'll call it publicity and support for potential visitors coming into the area. The area that would be included would include obviously Calvert County, Charles County, St. Mary's, and possibly a portion of Southern Prince George's County. We'll see what happens. We talked about the Calvert County Economic Development Advisory Commission. I said we were supposed to have a meeting yesterday on that. That was canceled. And then I mentioned the E D C hosted a virtual meeting on April 6 to seek input on what constitutes appropriate economic development. Pretty good discussion there. Lots of ideas shared on what could constitute that and how we could provide that input into the conference plan. Overall, what we're looking to do is provide input into the comprehensive plan. On that, a very interesting document that I was not previously aware of is called this up here, maybe you can't see it. It's called Reinvest Maryland 2.0 Toolkit for Assisting Maryland's Counties, Towns, and Communities to Accelerate Info, Redevelopment, and Revitalization. So the Economic Development Committee is going to be taking a very close look at that. You heard updates on the special events, which contribute to the town's economic development. We talked a little bit about the fireworks. Doesn't look good for that. We're still looking at the possibility of holding Taste of Beaches in September. And possibly, if that were to come off, we might actually look at a slightly expanded program for that. We're looking at the town website to see if we can improve information available to visitors under the businesses tab. And that's about it. I will also defer to co-chair Greg Morris for any additional comments. Greg?
I think you hit on everything, Larry. I know we've put some pressure on ourselves, on our committee. And looking forward to advancing appropriate economic development in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Green Team, Dr. Bodine?
Yes, so Green Team meeting has been set for Thursday, April 22 at 7:00 P. M. Look forward to participation and look forward to hopefully a lot of fun activities. So that's again, April 22, Thursday, 7:00 P. M. It'll be virtual until we gauge the comfort level of all those involved, whether or not we want to socially distance meet thereafter or if we want to continue virtually for the time being. But virtual Thursday, April 22 at 7:00 P. M.
Thank you. Kellum's Revitalization, Mr. Morris?
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Twin Beach Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition, Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. So we have not met since the last town council meeting. Our next meeting is coming up April 22 as well at 6:00 P. M. So hopefully, we'll get off the line before the green team needs it. Shouldn't be any deal. We're usually pretty quick, so it shouldn't be any problem. A couple of things I just wanted to bring to the attention. You've probably seen the Calvert Crisis Response signs, one in front of Town Hall, one in front of the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department. I just would like to thank our partners at the Calvert County Health Department. And of course, Jay and the Public Works and Holly for helping us get those set up and purchased as well as the entire committee for their input on those signs. The Calvert Crisis Response is a rebranding of their Recovery Rapid Response Line, and it's for more than just substance abuse. It's also for mental health issues or other kind of crises like that that may be happening in your household. Doesn't replace 911, of course, not for life-threatening issues. Let's see. Also, I'll be meeting with Danielle Russell from the Calvert County Health Department to discuss some grant opportunities to see if there's any opportunities for collaboration on a grant proposal they're putting together tomorrow, actually. So hopefully, we'll find some common ground there. And I believe that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith. Walkable Community Advisory Group, Charlie?
Yeah, I had said some things in the lightning round at town at our last work session. I want to reiterate them here. I'll try to be brief. But we have certainly a larger audience. We had a very interesting meeting right at the end of March, beginning of April, with members of the Calvert County Parks and Rec Group. Two people who work at the Northeast commuter, work out of the Northeast Community Center and work on a sort of a day term as the north end of the county. It's kind of interesting to talk to them. They do a number of events, which I'll talk about in a second, but you know, when you think about the northern end of Calvert County, and you want to be a pedestrian outside of dead-end neighborhoods, neighborhoods that essentially end in cul-de-sacs, Chesapeake Beach is, North Beach really offer the only resource, and I, and so we found quite a bit of common ground to talk about things that, that we might be able to do. They actually provided me, I, I can't speak for all members of our committee, but for me, they, they not, they didn't reorient my thinking, but they added a significant concept to our thinking. Our committee has been very focused on design of projects, connections, ways that we can make it easier for people to get from point A to point B on foot in, in our town and in, in the Twin Beaches community. They do quite a bit with the notion of events, of things that motivate people to get out and walk, and they use a lot of resources within Chesapeake Beach, our boardwalks, various routes through town, through the two towns. And so we're really going to try to work with them to publicize events and maybe even hold a few events of our own. One event that's coming up is going to be a scavenger hunt. They do this virtually. They, they did it last year virtually, and apparently it worked out very well. They locate beach balls in various parts of town. People go out and take pictures of them, and it's sort of a contest. Sounds like a really neat event, of course, all done on foot. We also kicked around the idea of holding some sort of a competition. We're not quite sure what the parameters this might look like, but where we would issue a challenge, say from Memorial Day to Labor Day, folks could go out and walk with various apps on their phone, record their walks, and there might be some kind of competition between the mayors of North Beach and Chesapeake Beach. Stay tuned what we might be able to come up with on that. But it's just that reorienting of events and driving people, getting in people's mindset, hey, let's go out and take a walk today. And so we're really going to try to work with them on that. The last thing I wanted to mention is I am working on, working with Holly. Holly, I know I owe you an email to get together to really help our committee better understand exactly what our processes are going to be as we, we identify our priorities. Again, balancing what we want to do with what we really can do in the near term as well as the long term. So I'm very much looking forward to that. I know I'm going to learn a lot, and so I'll be following up shortly. With that, I'll turn it over to Derek if he has anything to add. And thank you.
Yeah, no, nothing to add other than we are meeting next week still.
Yeah, next Monday. Thanks, Keith. I should have mentioned that. Monday night at
Okay, thank you. No unfinished business, new business. Council to consider the appointment of Jan Rocky to the Planning Commission. At the last work session, you know, we met and Jan thanked her for volunteering. So is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Second?
Comment?
Any comments from the council?
Yes.
Okay. You have a comment, Valerie?
Yeah, I was not able to be at the work session, and I just wanted to say this regarding Jan. As a long-term resident who is consistently and actively involved, her catch-up time for planning and zoning will be minimal, and her experience invaluable. And I just want to say, good luck, Jan. It is my honor to support you.
Thank you. Charlie?
I have no comments.
Thank you. Larry?
No further comments.
Thank you. Greg?
Yes, sir. I've known Jan a long time. She's definitely a quality person, and my comments aren't about Jan in any way. I do want to tread carefully, and it's not my intent to offend anybody. This is a little diff, this is, um, my opinion, it's not our average everyday appointment here. I've been really torn and really thinking about, some of us are aware of some recent controversial controversies regarding, well, regarding the resignation of a former planning and zoning administrator. The mayor strongly supports adding one, and I know there's a vacancy there, and that makes sense on the surface. See, but we also seem to be in support of subtracting one on there. I think there are some, they, everybody's got their reasons behind that. I'm not delving into any of that. I'm not sure how the rotten real developers feel about, and Bob Carpenter too, feel about these recent events. I know I haven't gotten one email about the moratorium in two weeks. Appointment at this time, particularly given some of the controversy that we're looking at, it just doesn't feel right. It doesn't feel like the right thing to do for me at this time. Because we want a comprehensive plan to be successful, we don't want any kind of optic that there's any perceived stacking of the deck going on with changes to the, to the upcoming comprehensive plan. I'm just not in support of appointment of a new planning and zoning commissioner at this time. If our Ethics Commission clears up what's happened with Mr. Evans, only then could I really be in support of, of appointing a, a new commissioner at this time, I think. I hope I explain myself diplomatically, that that's just how I feel, and it is from the heart. So I'll be voting against an appointment, any appointment to plan as only at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith?
I'd just like to thank Jan for stepping forward. I already pretty much said my, the rest of my piece at the planning session, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. And lastly, Derek?
Yeah, same here. I, I had favorable things to say about Jan at our work session. I will say to, to Larry Brown, you've got two members of the Walkable Community Advisor Group with assuming Jan's appointment on your Planning and Zoning Commission now, so you've got, you've got strong background in our Walkable Community Plan on your commission, so that should be helpful. And I guess also, this is just a request for, for Holly, if, you know, with, with the with the assumed appointment of Jan tonight, we'll have another vacancy on Board of Appeals. Could we just offline, could we just get a, you know, like an idea of what the makeup of the Board of Appeals is, and if there's any plans moving forward to recruit some members for that?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Both? It passes five to one. Okie doke. At this time, is there any public comment? Hearing none, I'll move to the council lightning round, and I'll, I'll begin with Dr. Bodine.
Oh, yeah, just on three quick things. First, looking forward to bringing back any Green Team initiatives next month from our meeting. Second, I was thrilled to have, have allowed the residents' voices to be heard clearly and loudly with the prohibition of full casino licenses. I think that's what they wanted, what they asked for, and it's what we delivered. And finally, on Saturday, April twenty-fourth is the End Hunger Bike Ride. So next Saturday, April twenty-fourth, End Hunger Bike Ride, and there's still time to register. It's fun.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Frank?
Yeah, sorry, I was on, I was on mute. I have some background noise. Yeah, I just want to change gears for a second and do something a little bit unusual. I've had some opportunity this week to spend time in the great state of Missouri. I don't know how many of you have been to Missouri. I am not even remotely near Kansas City, and there is no COVID here. There is no COVID here because there really aren't many people. In fact, we are outnumbered by cattle, a little over two to one is what I'm told in this small town, and small would be a definition of the population count, not the acreage. It just strikes me how diverse and vast our country is, and how it's natural maybe that we end up in some of these disputes, and you have some very different needs in, in Missouri than you do in Manhattan. So maybe now and again, we should, we should sort of take a step back and consider what the other folks see and what their daily lives are like, and, and do a good job striking a balance in how we, how we have discourse in our public area. Go Chiefs.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry?
And thank you, everyone, for the birthday wishes as I celebrate my reverse birthday of seventeen, so having a good time. I also wanted to share advance happy birthday wishes with town administrator Holly Wall, whose birthday is Sunday, and the same for our town first lady, Judy Mahoney, who is also Sunday, so happy birthday to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, since we're on birthdays, I would be remiss if I didn't say that Larry shares the same birthday as my son, Patrick, so that's kind of how I always know Larry's birthday every year. So happy birthday, Patrick. Okay, Greg?
Yeah. I just wanted to make a few comments, and we're engaged in a lot of issues, and the town's very typically very busy, has been very busy since I've been on council, and I applaud that. We're engaged in a lot of different areas. Certainly, we've got some controversies, and we'll get through them. I just wanted to leave everybody with some thoughts on moving forward. And we'll choose how we move through current adversaries. Adversities, yeah. We're striving to become a better town every day, to build a better town with every decision. I strongly feel that my colleagues and a lot of the, if not all of the volunteer boards that we have work hard, and they're good people, and they're good citizens of the town. Building upon past foundations, raising expectations, advancing young vibrant ideas. These are things we need to also be doing. Through inclusion, collaboration actually takes on meaning. And encouragement isn't merely a pacifier. So everybody have a good spring. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, just one thing. So Holly had shared this with me last week, and it was kind of neat that the Calvert County government, their tourism, I guess, Economic Development Department has been working on a Calvert County birding trail to, across, across the county there to generate interest, to get people out, and they've included the railway trail as one of the sites on this, so that was kind of neat to learn about, and if, and if you Google Calvert County Birding Trail, you can get more information on that. I think they're planning on a, a bigger event next month to, to announce it. But anyway, I just wanted folks to know about that. It's kind of neat, and I think they're going to be building up the, you know, the species list. The one thing, Holly, if, if you do get a chance to, to let them know, I was talking to some of my birding friends, and they were like, oh, you should have them tag a, the eBird hotspot. So the railway trail is an eBird hotspot, and apparently you, you know, they encourage other groups to tag, tag their site, and so folks could then click on that and go to, it'll open up the eBird site, and it'll show what's recently been cited at those hotspots. So anyway, that's another thing you can share with them. They might want to do that with all their sites if, if, if they know how to do that. With that, I just want to thank everybody for coming out.
Thank you, Keith. Derek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I want to give kudos to the council for passing three drama-free budgets tonight. Really a testament to the excellent work done by the administrator, the treasurer, and all the staff who, who have input to that process. Great job again. We've got two more to do next, next month, and I look forward to wrapping that up again. And also want to thank those who joined us on the call tonight. We really do appreciate you guys being on here and hope you keep coming. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second?
All in favor? Have a good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Happy birthday, Larry.
Thank you. Time for a beer.
And Holly.
Thank you. Happy birthday, Larry.
Thank you.